Okay, well, it's about six oh one, so let's go ahead and call the minutes order. Shall we stand?
Ledger Regent.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, or nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I guess I skipped over a little call, so Nicole is not going to be here tonight. Don't know if Dan's gonna make it or not, so. Changes to the agenda. So, elementary handbook will be added to the ten June. Anybody else have any other changes? Any other changes? If not, is there a motion to approve the changes to the agenda?
I think a motion to approve the changes to the agenda.
Okay, Angie, you have a second?
Second.
Angie, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Thanks Kyle, you have a second?
Second.
Jess, thank you Jess. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, any public input tonight?
You wanted to say something, babe.
Don't worry to me.
Did you say something last time? You were here? You guys?
Yeah, readings.
Didn't see you walk in.
It was all good.
It was, it was requested.
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Recognition of Good Things Happening, we want to thank the LO staff for the great school year. You guys are appreciated and we're excited for your return in August. I'm sure you guys are excited about that as well. Congratulations to our 2025 graduates, best of luck to you all in your future endeavors. Alright, how about a principal's report?
Alright, appreciate the sheet in front of you, not a lot to report on right now, just kind of a lot of things going on, but not a lot to finalize report. Let's get out, keep the P L C, kind of our goal, what we talk about throughout the year for staff on top. Coming soon, which will probably be July, well, probably July, but could be August, but most of the stuff, a lot of the stuff is done, but I'll start sending this stuff out end of July, beginning of August. Your master schedules, your calendars, staffing updates. When the data from M D E is released, you'll get, I'll give you a breakdown of that. Kind of when they give us more information on what's going on with Read Act, where we're at with R C D. When Larry Thompson will be here this year, I'll try to see if I can get him for ordination this year like we've hoped last year. Handbook will be next two months, and then I always begin with beginning new materials that I send out only, I always send out a couple emails to the staff beginning of the year, right, only six, seven, eight, 10 of them, with all the things on there, so a lot of stuff in the works, but nothing, you can, you can, I'll show you that stuff later, July or August, so, but a lot of stuff just going on, but nothing there, so. Any questions on that?
Any questions for Erin? Okay, thanks Erin. Jen?
Alright, I don't have a lot free tonight, but we'll do some presenting tonight, which is where the majority of my time has been spent, but last week I did attend a Mauer, and this past week, or yesterday, a Mauer County mapping meeting, and I kind of informed you guys a little bit as a grant that a few of us superintendents wrote. It's a safety grant, to get just a better literal picture of our building and around our building, just for safety reasons. And so, we're still working on that. All the district M D E reporting in terms of my end has been finalized, and of course Erin's is done. Once his is done, then it comes to me, I finish mine, and then I have a couple more that I need to finish, so that is done. And it always needs to be done by July 1st, so we got that done. Our football co-op agreement is actually approved by all school districts now. So, I do now have a copy with everybody's signature on it, and I will send that off to all of you now that that's been completed.
Is there, is there, sorry, is there like a final contract?
Yep, yep, so the co-op agreement is basically a contract, essentially, so we'll have monetary information as well as language or narratives in there as well. So you'll see kind of two documents, the budget versus the contract itself, so, yeah, but we're all in agreement. We met, well, some people met a couple times, and then the whole group met once, and then the superintendents kind of went back and forth a couple times on some issues. But at the end of the day, we're happy with it, we're all okay, so, so that's good. The congressional session has ended, the special session also ended. And I really got to thank all of you, as well as our teachers, for reading my emails. I know they're pretty dry and not that fun to read. I hope you read them, I think you guys do. But it's, the outlook continues to be bleak, and I'll continue to say that. Minnesota is notorious for giving us money and then taking it away. And that's what's happening in the next biennium, and I'll continue to keep you all posted. Internally, our teachers, as well as our board, I'll probably just put you all in one email instead of two separate ones, so, there's that, but speaking of monies, our audit, our annual financial audit is scheduled for October 6th and 7th. We got that in the books. So then, we're gonna start basically in July and August, they start kind of looking at our documents. So there's kind of this never-ending cycle of finances for the school district. Maybe mark it down too, that likely in November will be the audit presentation to the school board, so, and that's for our teachers association to know too. You guys will get that in my email, my weekly email anyway, but just so you're aware. Our next district policy committee won't be until September. We like to give everybody a break during the course of the summer months, and you're gonna see that on your board agenda tonight as well. And then, I just need to say a huge thank you, especially to Sharon, but Erin also added to our really, really, the timing-consuming work it takes to build, to not only build the revised budget, but also the budget you're gonna see tonight. And that's based off the data we know from the State Department, and even some of our kind of future plannings, whether it's building and grounds, L T F M things, contract negotiations, whatever it may be. I think the three of us do a really nice job of predicting things, and getting you some nice information that we're gonna, we're pretty proud to share tonight, so, otherwise, that's it for me.
Any questions for Jen? Thank you. Consent agenda. We need to approve the made regular school board meeting minutes, are there any corrections or additions to those? Okay, treasures reports, any questions on any of that information? Looks like there's gonna be a couple fundraisers, the F F A, as a fresh fruit, butter grades, meat, cheese, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. On October 7th to 28th. Class of 2026, frozen pies, gonna make candy, that sounds pretty good too. Personnel, we need to approve the resignation of Annette Rohrich, custodian, effective June 2nd. Approve the non-tenure of Winter Milks, end of school fiscal year 2425. Recommendation from the activities office to approve the hiring of the following winter coaches and advisors for the school year 2526. Service will be according to the Schedule C and E A contract. Boys basketball, our head coach, Justin Stevens. Head J V coach, Aaron Hungerhold, and junior high coach, Lindsey Milks. Anybody have any questions on any of that? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you Dave, is there a second? Jess, thank you. Any questions, discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, discussion and action items. So, policy review, there was no June policy committee meeting, so I guess we don't have anything to act on there. No donations, so we don't have anything to act on there. Need to approve the tax, housing tax abatement. Application for Deborah Strelow, Lot 13, Block 2, Section 28. Township 101, Range 014, so, I don't know where that's at, it's stuck in my head, maybe somebody does.
Is that in the, the ocean? Yeah, it's right across the room.
That's why I'm wondering if it's that one.
Okay. Okay, any questions about that, any discussion about that? Otherwise, we've done that several times before. Okay, would there be a motion to approve that tax abatement for Deborah Strelow?
Some.
Thank you. Angie, is there a second?
Sorry.
Thanks Kyle, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, first reading of the emergency handbook. What can you guys tell us about that?
Yeah, I can, I'm not gonna, obviously you guys got it and got the changes, but I, since most or a lot of you are new and we really haven't got, I'm not gonna read it to you, but I'm just gonna kind of go through these and highlight things to see if you have any questions, just because we haven't really talked about it for a few years. So basically with the emergency one, it's basically all the procedures you could have, from our fire drills, to lockdowns, to tornadoes, to Alice drills, to bomb threats, to anything, the kind of procedures how to do it. There's calling trees in here, there are emergency contacts, the people within the community as well, if we needed to. And then locations, you know, where do each class go for the tornado drills, things like that. And then, the last page with the new mapping, that was actually an update, it was all the correct numbers. We went through a school building this year. Trevor and I did, and renamed and renumbered, just want all the rooms to make it make sense inside of the building. Due to our music concert, kind of gave us opportunity for, make things more directional and things, and.
We want to do it again.
Yeah, so the maps are updated and.
We're gonna, so we don't want you.
So let's just kind of a nutshell of the emergency handbook, because that's kind of what that one's all about.
Are there any changes other than?
Just names, just names and numbers, this is just names and numbers of new staff leaving or staff coming, or board members coming or leaving, or something like that, so, nothing really on that, so. We do all of our emergency stuff, we do five fire drills, five lockdowns, tornado drill. Usually every other year, we try to do an Alice drill, this year we're not doing an Alice drill, but usually we do one of those with the whole community, so we practice all these and are aware of what they are, so.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Erin on the emergency handbook? If not, would someone like to make a motion to approve the first reading of the emergency handbook?
Aye.
Thanks Jess, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Angie, any discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, first reading of the faculty handbook.
Kind of the same thing, you guys can, you know, hopefully take time to read it, because there's a lot of information there, but basically it's kind of directions, expectations, directives for the, for the staff, anywhere from, you know, mandated reporting to passes, to when the daily announcements are, to chaperones, to field trips. You know, what's, how much is a field trip, if you're gonna plan one. Has everything from grading, lunches. Pretty much anything a teacher would need to know in regards to expectations in their job. You know, and then in the back, there's some transportation requests, things like that, licensure stuff, permission trip, field trips, stuff like that, so a little bit of everything a teacher, hopefully we cover that, kind of give them the direction of what they would need to know for their school day or things like that too, so.
Are there any changes in that from?
Not the, not, nothing, if you, if it wasn't included with it, it was nothing major. I mean, we've had, over the years, what we do is Nikki, Leanne, and I usually keep running records throughout the year. They'll keep all of these in their desk, and as we run across things throughout the year, we make notes. So, I would say over the years, there've been pretty minor, I mean, could be time changes to different things like that, but nothing, nothing major that we would have changed in these. So I mean, there's expectations sometimes get added in there, or things like that, when we run across things, but.
Okay. Any other questions for Erin on the faculty handbook? If not, would someone like to make a motion to approve the first reading of the faculty handbook?
So move.
Thanks Kyle, is there a second?
A second.
Thanks Dave, any other discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carried. Okay, now we need to approve the first reading of the middle school, high school student handbook.
Okay, and this one is geared obviously for the parents of our middle school, high school, talking over from transcripts to lockers to infinite campus portal, if you lose or damage books, or library books. Before and after school hours, you know, we want students off campus, not hanging around before and after school. So we have the times that we'd like that to happen. We talk about our close campus for lunch, you have your student dress, you have your visitor stuff. We have senior graduation, senior skip day, senior class trip, P S C O requirements, what that means, how those are communicated, talk a little bit of nurse, some things for band, by ed, honor roll, academic letters. Many student discipline issue or policies are in here. See what else, like I said, students in good standing, eligibility, hazing, and a lot of these go along with the policy, the district policy committee, we do, we just try to sometimes put them in our own words to make it correlate to our school, but that's what we follow, so some of those policies actually do get put in there, attendance policies. You know, anything that the high school, middle school parent would need, talk about ritual truancy. Then there's forms in the back, we have like field trip permission slips, volunteer things, things like that, so. Once again, nothing crazy, you know, we have the bell schedule, things like that in there, so, nothing really too outstanding that's due to that.
Any changes? Okay. Any questions for Erin on the middle school, high school student handbook? If not, would someone like to make a motion to approve the first reading of the middle school, high school student handbook? Thanks Angie, is there a second? Thanks Jess, any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, the additional would be to approve the first reading of the elementary student handbook.
Yeah, this one's quite not so in-depth with so much of the policies, but you could talk about the cardinal kids, if any supervision, talk about immunizations, early childhood screening, classroom visits, notes from parents, how to call the office. Attendance, kind of your beginning stuff for, you know, things along that idea, your tardies, attendance, ritual truancy, what that means, riding a bus, you know, your cell phone policy, discipline plan. Kind of gym and swimming classes, just things like that for the elementary, talk about the dental health. We have more of those type of things. Recess, malpractice, playground behavior, library stuff. And then we do have some policies with weapons and things like that, but other than that, and then some forms at the end. Once again, field trip permission slips, stuff like that, so, once again, nothing crazy, but just kind of beginning stuff for those first parents that come in, so.
Okay. Any questions for Erin on the elementary handbook? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve the first reading of the elementary student handbook? Make a motion to. Okay, thanks Dave, is there a second? Thanks Kyle, any questions, discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, and we got the first reading of the pool handbook. Are you out of handbooks?
No, I'm out of handbooks. You're looking, you're looking somewhere else now.
So, the pool handbook essentially the changes, being Kristen is new, our new director. She wanted to take additional time to review this, and so I told her that was fine, because we can always come up, come back to the school board with any significant changes later on if we find out. The only changes that you'll see that are different than the other handbook, the other pool handbook, is that we put her name down. You know, just things like that, page numbers, just a very minimal thing.
Housekeeping.
Yes, very housekeeping thing, so, otherwise, like I said, if, if things come about, we've done this in the past, like with our cell phone policies, we've come back to you to amend any handbook, so we would do the same with the pool too.
Okay. Would someone, well, any questions before I add the pool handbook? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve the first reading of the pool handbook?
Some.
Thanks Angie, is there a second?
A second.
Thanks Dave, any discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, the first reading of the activities and coaches handbook. Somebody got that handbook?
I don't believe there's any, I don't think there are.
I don't think so either, I mean, you said, again, the housekeeping stuff, you guys saw, we highlighted everything in that one, if there were any changes, and there were some here and there, where there was a grading policy as it relates to the high school handbook, as like that, student handbook, and we want to make sure they're reflective of each other. But it essentially, I want to say, looks the same as last year's.
Yeah.
So.
There's always Angie's, probably got that pulled up.
I do, there's very little highlighting, so.
Okay. Alright, any questions on the coaches handbook? If not, is there a motion to approve the first reading of the activities slash coaches handbook?
So move.
Thanks Kyle, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Jess, any discussion, questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, now we need to set and approve the 25, 26 school board meeting dates, which has been the third Tuesday of each month.
With the disclaimer, sometimes it changes, you never know.
Something to change, any reason, any reason to change that, that anybody knows of? Okay, if not, would someone like to make a motion setting those dates for the upcoming year? Okay, the third Tuesday of each month, correct? Okay, is there a second to that?
A second.
Okay, thanks Kyle, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright. Now we need to adopt a resolution of M D E identifying the official with authority, which has been our superintendent.
It's not, it sounds like a pretty important title, but it's not, it's basically giving me rights to hand off reports to S M E C, for example, or giving Erin the right to do our disciplinary report here, giving Sharon the right to look at our levy. So, they need to have one person, it's typically the superintendent, because it's one person per school district. They give us the right to.
M D E needs somebody, somebody's hired to assist.
Yeah, to bully is what it is.
Okay, any questions?
But this does have to be a resolution, I'm sorry.
Okay, otherwise, would someone like to make a motion to adopt that resolution, authorizing Jen to be the identified official with authority?
I'll make a motion to give Jen the authority.
Okay, okay, is there a second to that? Thanks Angie, okay, we'll vote.
Yep. Yes.
Yes?
Yes, yes.
Okay, very good, we're half, almost over half the crew here tonight, it's hard to track it. Okay, that motion carried. Alright, we need to approve the resolution to adopt the 25, 26 L T F M budget. So Jen, would you like to?
Yeah, Sharon and I will take team on this, it's kind of fun, so, first let me begin with this. So mostly, for the past few years, we have built or created a.
Sure.
A building grounds and safety committee, and so when we do that, we, we discuss and talk about the importance of our facility and our grounds, and what kind of basic improvements we need to do, or even preventative maintenance things we need to do, and this encompasses everything our committee does, whether it's carpet, ceiling, lights, the pool, whatever it may be. And all those items, I place on a pretty significant spreadsheet that the board gets all the time from me, it's this big one, all the highlights. Well, Sharon then takes the information from here, and then of course we need to talk about, hey, this is what our plan is for either this year, next year, maybe it's five years down the road, maybe 10 years down the road. And all that information is based off legislation, based off our budget, based off the dire needs of our district, based off kind of the, the way our committee is going, whatever it may be, so we do that, we dive into it. We of course have help from the outside, whether it's Sarah Miller at M D E, or Angie Radall at I E A. They help us with this too, to make sure we're on the right track and getting the money that you guys weren't getting in the past. And we are getting that now, to help offset costs of our general fund, and it goes towards L T F M, basically. So in front of you is a rather large document, we're not gonna go through it tonight, but essentially looks the same as last year, because it is a 10-year report that we do have to send to M D E. We have to have a statement of assurances, that this is what we believe to be true. Yes, there is a disclaimer, it may change in case something would happen, you know, something in our building shuts down, or whatever, we need a new heater, or whatever it may be, but we believe at this point in time, tonight's board meeting, essentially, because that's when my statement of assurances will go off, is what it's gonna look like and what we're planning for the next 10 years. Now again, every year changes, but this is a general thought that we have. So a lot of credit goes to our building and grounds committee for really giving us a sense of where we need to go, what we've done in the past, and then way, way out in the future, like 10 years, frankly. Sharon, you want to add anything?
Just that this plan can go in the negative, as long as they see that it comes back up. And so, you'll see when we put the building hardware and equipment, that is a water softener that has been talked about for some time. Actually put some numbers down, and put it in the plan here this year, and so, and roofing, and some different carpeting or flooring ideas as well as in here, so, those things, really the only revenue you have is the levy that comes in, but it's a hundred thousand dollars, so it's very significant if you weren't getting nothing before, so, well done, policy, on that. And then this folds into the bigger budget as well.
Well, our building and grounds committee is, guys are probably where meets a few times a year, taking input from the administration, from teachers, from whomever, we do walkthroughs in the building to see what the needs are, and kind of come up with, probably, we try to prioritize all these needs, because there's a lot of them. So, but, and then these guys put numbers to those.
Again, you know, I, I know I say this a lot, but I sincerely mean it, monies from M D E and our budget, they're, they're moving targets, very similar to a, a home budget, a home bank account. My husband and I will never have 20,000 sitting in our checking. We may one day, and then the next day I have to buy my son a car, then we're down to 2,000 dollars, or whatever, you know, it's, there's a moving target, yep, you can hope for this, you're predicting this, but this is really where it is. And so L T F M, that's why they're, they offer us an opportunity saying, in 10 years, we want to do this. So, I wish M D E was more like this with all their financials, this is a really good, in my opinion, I guess, project. Um, this is a really good, in my opinion, I guess, project-based budgets, budgeting. We can look at it all the time, talk about like, oh, no, we did this back then, now we gotta move to here, but it, it just kinda keeps us on track all the time, so. But again, moving, it's always moving, it's liquid.
Like the lighting project, you know, that was a big project, we actually split that into two years.
Two years, yep. Yep. Yeah, and, and MDE was great in helping me with that, if it was even okay to do that. Um, and Sarah was great, so. Yep.
Did, uh, anything the legislature did this year affect this company?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's one that they're gonna continue and build on.
Okay.
It won't be as much, very little, yeah. The percentage will go down, but we get it, it's not like they took it, but it's not gonna be like that.
Yeah. Okay.
So they definitely are giving into roofing projects in particular. So, whatever that rolls out to be.
And we do have, so you guys know, and I know I shared this once, one other time, maybe it was last year, piggybacking off of Sharon saying, we do have a preventative maintenance plan for roofing. Um, it's about a ten-year plan, so, boy, once you get those preventive maintenance plans going, you're saving money. You know, because you're dealing with it every year, and it's not this big bill at the end, it's. So, we're pretty happy with our roofing plan. Another plan, it's two, just sound in particular, she said.
Okay. Any other questions for Jen regarding the long-term facility maintenance?
And if you think about, you know, questions later, call me, for sure. And I did send off too, and you know, Dylan posted it to the definition of LTFM. Um, so that's on our website too, so if people wanna know, what does it even mean? What is LTFM? That was, that was part of your, your board packet too.
Okay. Any questions? Regarding LTFM, any, anything at all, not just the money, but anything at all? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six long-term facility maintenance budget, ten-year plan?
So moved.
Thanks Angie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Dave. Um, this'll be a roll call vote as well. Kyle?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, yes.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, um, so now, we're gonna look at the twenty-four, twenty-five, so this past school year. Year we're just about to the end of, the revised budget for that.
And we'll probably talk about both at the same time, if we get real clear.
Just, just fine.
So I'm gonna start off tonight, but again, reiterating what I said earlier, um, to thank Sharon, Erin, also guidance from any committees anybody was on about, and I take that information very carefully and try to talk with my administrative team just about where we need to go, what we need to do. And I wanna break it down even further by saying, I, I, my job as your superintendent is to look five, five years out plus. Can I sustain this district for you for five years plus? Sharon looks at the three to five-year mark, sometimes even the two to five-year mark, like, little bit more futuristic, but still, hey, kinda living in the now, kind of. And Erin looks at the day-to-day operations, maybe a year out at the most. So, bringing us all together in the same room, don't get me wrong, we have a lot of opinions, um, and we battle on occasion, not very often, but we do battle on occasion, but I think that's what makes a budget healthy, because we each bring a component to it. Um, they can't even write down, you'll see it in the numbers, but we can't tell you enough of, you know, our feelings that come out with it, our, our research that we do, um, we each have different guiding organizations that help us through the budget process, um, that we embrace and bring to the table. And so, um, so I really wanna start with that, how important it is that we work together on this, and we do, we do. And tonight, we're just happy to report on what we have for you. Um, and again, and I wanna stress this, as I said before, with LTFM, budgets are changing, hence why you do an approval of a revised budget every year. It has changed in three-hundred-and-sixty-five days from last year's budget. Um, so that's why you do a revision, it's going to happen. I mean, we're, we are the largest institution in your communities. Um, and so of course, it's a multimillion dollar budget that is going to change. Um, just like the one we're presenting tonight for next year, likely it will change, no doubt, um, next year when we approve it, the revise, the revision of it. So, those are the two key things that I really want you to take away. Um, but I'll hand it off to Sharon, and then I'll probably come back too. So, Sharon, I'll hand it off to you.
Um, so, as Jen was saying earlier, a budget is really the best guess of the time that you put it together. And so, that's what, of course, you're looking at. So what we're doing right now is we're revising the twenty-five budget, it's the current budget. Um, we, even today, the approvals and the budget reports that you reviewed and looked at to prepare for this, um, evening is still from May. So, lots of expenses and a lot of things happen in June. And so, um, if we look at the year-to-date twenty-twenty-five number on here, it's not even close to where we'll be for the revised budget. Um. So, when we're building this, um, we are looking at everything, um, all the revenues, all the expenses, and the numbers that you're looking at and approving include the general fund, the pool, and the activity outcome. So all of them are folded into this budget. Um, when this budget was adopted, there was a surplus of thirteen thousand five hundred approximately, and I'm anticipating that we may come out just a little short, instead of ahead. At thirteen thousand, we'll probably be short, possibly seven thousand dollars, but that could change, and I'm gonna address that here in a little bit as well. I'm also now just going to reach over to the twenty-six adopted budget that I'm proposing that you approve tonight. Um, it's not changing a whole lot. You can see all the way to the right, there's a percentage change, and it's at zero percent. Um, the reason for that is because, as far as revenues goes, there's not a whole lot of anticipated change from the state. Um, the things that are changing are kind of pigeonholed and pocketed, and.
Like LTFM.
Yeah.
That's a line item.
LTFM, and things like that. General overall aid, levy, all of those things are gonna be affected by one thing, and that is going to be your membership and your enrollment. And so, that is the one very important factor that you as a board, and, and, and as admin, as administration, as well as staff, need to remember, is we have to keep that number up. That is the one thing that's gonna keep this place going in the positive direction that it needs to go.
And let me support what she's saying in this. All of you have read those legislative emails about how they wanna flatten out that aid. What they're saying is, we've given you your two percent, so run with it. You know, they're not looking at the next biennium to approve any percent on, on the student aid whatsoever. So, but we can still get aid from students that come in. We're just not getting any more aid on top of that. So, yeah, so that's how, and actually, the, the older the kids are, the better sometimes, because we get more money for them too.
And open enrollment is very important as well, so we have students that go to Iowa and vice versa. We have people going in and coming out, and so, um, it's, it's pretty even, but we need to continue to work on that and see if we can't get them to come this way, or at the very least, not have them go that way. Um, and the other thing that is becoming a very large factor is PSE old classes. Um, it went from zero to a thousand this year. And so, that's something that we, you know, we really can't control it. So you have to kind of be ready and anticipate it, and be able to cover it when it does happen. So that is post-secondary education classes that we hear as a district pay for when the students reach out to take those classes that aren't offered at the high school level that they could take. So, that's something that affected and probably did swing this a little bit, so. Um. So, in general, I feel like the revised budget that's presented in front of you, um, is pretty good. It's not, we're not coming to you and saying that we gotta cut a hundred thousand dollars in the twenty-six budget because we failed a whole lot here, um, on adopting that budget from last year. So, and it was actually, you know, put together, um, I'm looking at a date of six twenty-one, twenty-four, so. Um. So that revised budget is changing, but not a whole lot. Now, it could change more, and the reason I say that is because we have to go through audit and have adjustments. There is one thing I know in particular, and that is, um, the student support personnel aid and the student library aid, and there's also a student co-op aid that we received, and forty thousand dollars was attached to each of those. It's aid that the state of Minnesota gave each of the school districts for the last few years, and they continue to, although they're cutting it back a little bit now already. But if you don't spend it on exactly what they tell you, and it is very specific, so that, let me give you an example for the student support personnel. The only way that we could use that money is.
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand dollars. So they're, they're kind of, I, I wanna say, giving you, it's the envelope system. So instead of giving you all this general aid, they're giving you an envelope of forty thousand dollars to spend on full-time equivalent for licensed school counselor, licensed school psychologist, licensed school social worker, licensed school nurse, or licensed school chemical dependency counselor. And that has to be an increase of an FTE from what you had when COVID was in existence.
And keep in mind, to support our teachers who are sitting here today, social workers, school social workers who are licensed by MDE with an education license, school psychologists, all have their master's degree or more. We cannot find somebody for forty thousand dollars with that credential. That is a slap in the face to those educators, and that's just my opinion as your superintendent. So they were flashing this money out there for us trying to do it, and it's.
Still an unfunded mandate.
It's still an unfunded something, yes. It's not fair, it's not right.
So that's. So there's a lot of schools that are not able to hire, because they're just not out there to hire, for one thing. How many times did you, you know, put it out there, it's still out there.
It's still around.
Yeah, it's still out there, and we're not getting anybody to hire, far less for forty thousand dollars. Um, and then you're probably hiring them and saying, as long as this aid is available, you'll have employment here, otherwise, this could go away. And that's never a good thing to say. So, library aid is similar. We have, we are able to use that, um, on current expenses, and hoping we can use as much as they're giving us for that and not having to return any. But I'm bringing this up because we may, through the audit this year, have to pay that. They may, they will be scratching that forty thousand dollars back for that student support personnel.
We're trying, we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
We're playing with them a little bit.
So, and there's other aid that, um, for transportation, that fluctuates a little bit, and special ed aid that could fluctuate a little bit, so these revenues could change. Um, anyway, so twenty-five revised budget, twenty-six adopted budget. What I'll speak to that is, again, that, um, revenues didn't change a whole lot because of the budget that was passed at the state level, and so, there isn't a whole lot of change. There is a little bit of extra revenue coming in, because we are part of the project for the solar field, and that revenue will start coming in this year at nine thousand dollars for the year. Um, and then, um, basically, what we anticipate being increases in supporting contract increases, uh, it has been offset by the very good job and very good future planning of the administration on having, um, employing personnel in the future. And that is a very tough thing to balance, because again, I'm gonna circle back to keeping students in your district. That is, um, that's a balancing act, that you have to keep your programs in place if you wanna keep your, your students coming. You can't be cutting programs a whole lot. I mean, you might have to cut personnel, but, but you still wanna continue to offer programs to keep everything, um, looking advantageous for students to keep coming here. So, all in all, I think your administration has done a good job so that this, um, budget can be presented to you as it is, and hopefully, as a balanced budget.
We wanna also, kind of to, to wrap up what she's saying too, is we wanna show our constituency, we're using our dollar wisely. You know, we don't wanna have, you know, this negative account coming for us saying, sorry, sorry, Dave, I used all your money, I'm sorry about that. You know, instead, we wanna be able to show, this is where we used it, and we predicted going into next year about the same, without the aid that she talked about. Like, we're predicting that, um, reading what the legislature has said, or listening to what they've said. Um, and I believe it to be true, I mean, it's coming. Um, so that's what this is about. This is the research we've done, the, the promise to our constituency that we're not frivolous with the dollar, we wanna respect the dollar and do what we need to do.
Well, on twenty-twenty-five, I guess, I think, I look at that and see if you missed your, your mark by seven thousand dollars on a five-million-dollar budget, I don't think that's too bad at all, really. It looks good, but I guess the question that I would have, I mean, we've read your emails, Jen, and stuff, but this is a public meeting, and maybe somebody that might watch this doesn't know what the legislature ended up doing. And so if you wanna just maybe fill, answer on that, that'd be awesome.
Yep, and again, I'm gonna probably throw in some of my personal feelings, just because I have to balance your budget and balance the budget of the people of Leroy and Ostrander and surrounding townships, um, and Sharon can jump in here too. But at the end of the day, um, it's pretty unfortunate when, just last year, we were given money, and all of a sudden now going into this next biennium, they're taking it away. Um, I get a little emotional about it, because these are kids we're talking about. We're talking about the lives of our teaching staff, our, our principal, you know, it's, it's a hard discussion, a hard pill to swallow. I, I look like I've aged fifty years after writing these emails of emailing you guys out, um, because it's very frustrating for me that, um, we're supposed to be a state uh, that supports education, supports kids, supports teachers, uh, supports the forever of public education, and. But the next biennium is looking not so good, they don't wanna give money on the student aid dollar. So we get roughly, again, very rough number here, six thousand dollars a kid per year. Uh, they do not wanna put any more money into that, instead, like we talked about, they do on a line item stuff instead, such as, no, we'll give you money, but it has to be for roofing. Rarely is there any comments related to, we're gonna give you this money, but it has to be for students. No strings attached, just students. Uh, we're not hearing that. Am I missing anything, or am I saying it right now?
It, it just generally, the basic, um, aid calculations.
Formula, we call it sometimes.
Yeah, the formula, and it's pages long, like, multiple pages. Um, it did not increase in any, any category. Or very few, very limited few, if any, which is why you're seeing.
That seven thousand.
Very, very, very similar, so.
Yeah. Usually you'd see it probably increase a little bit.
So what about on the next year, the second year of the?
Same.
Just flat?
Yes.
And the third year was going to be?
That's a new biennium, and so then hopefully it's different. We'll see. We'll see.
I thought they were talking about maybe cutting.
Cutting.
Oh, that's when the cutting is said, so really, you're talking about the second year. So, our views are different, but yes, that would be cutting, taking money away. That we're, usually we can plan for money, um, and get some help. And not that it's help, it's, we're just running an institution, the statute is, we're paid by aids, levies, referendums, whatever it may be, it's, this isn't our fault. Like, this is how statute is, and we're just, I mean, we, many times, Erin and I will talk about how we reach out to. how we reach out to our legislative people via nasty emails or maybe a, a nasty text or phone call, but there's no movement, they're not listening right now. They're not listening, I think they're shocked as we are at how, how bad budgets are. Whether it's state, you know, local, state, or federal level right now. We're all a little worried, but that's, like I said though, I'm going full circle here. That's why I need this team and you guys, um, as well as the committees we have to really, um, guide me, guide our team of where we need to go. Me, five or more years out, Sharon, two to five years, three to five years, and Aaron, here in the now, what he's pining for. Um, and that's what works, is we're looking to make sure we're sustainable, that kids have an education here at Leroy Ostrander, and our teachers have jobs. That's what we're trying for. But our hands are tense and tense.
So just an overall statement from the states that says that they gave a significant increase in funding for schools this year. But again, it's the envelope system, it's not an overall here.
It's not a general fund, and that's what impacts, it's the teachers, it's a general fund.
You can't use it all.
Right. And then it's followed up by.
They give it to you on paper.
However, however, comma, comes with warnings of potential cuts in the following biennium due to a projected budget overhaul, so.
So, like that example you used for social work and whatnot, we get forty thousand dollars. Can that be supplemented to pay the nurse that we had, or it has to all be?
Very specific. And you couldn't use it for supplies or anything, or curriculum or anything like that, it had to be F T Es.
Yeah.
I'm going to pat ourselves on the back here a little bit, mostly you, you guys, um, because I'm looking at a list of sixteen southeastern Minnesota school districts that are making cuts for this coming year from anywhere from a hundred thousand to a million six. And, uh, we don't have to do that, and it's because of the management that's happened here, especially with those S R dollars and so forth. Uh, a lot of these districts added personnel with those, of that money that, it's, it went away. So, um, I, I just, I just think you guys need to be commended for that, because we're not in that situation. We might be in a, in a, we might have some bumpy roads coming up in the next, uh, two, three, four years, but, um, we're not in the situation these districts are in, so you guys need credit for that. Any other, any questions about, uh, what they just presented?
I know it's a lot, and like I said with L T F M, if you have questions, email or call me. Email or call Sharon, uh, we can walk you through any of this, any of this.
Did I forget that I really like budgets?
Oh, you're not.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Otherwise, the first thing that we need to do is approve the revised budget uh, from the year twenty-four, twenty-five, which is going to end here in a couple of weeks. Any questions on that, anybody? If not, is there a motion to approve the revised budget as presented by Jen and Sharon?
So.
Ms. Angie, is there a second? Thanks, Jess. Is there any other discussion or questions before we vote? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Okay. The next thing we need to do is, uh, approve the preliminary budget for, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, which they also included that in their presentation. Any questions, any discussion? Okay. If not, is there a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six preliminary budget? Thanks, Dave, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Angie. Any discussion or questions before we vote? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Okay. Uh, school board committee reports. I can start. We met as a negotiating committee with the, the union negotiating committee tonight, and had, I thought a very productive and good discussion. I don't think it's going to take very many more meetings, but I can't give any details this time. But, um, if you guys, uh, are curious or want some details, just, you'll have to ask me personally. Okay. Any other committee reports? I don't know, we have another Building and Grounds Committee report.
In August.
August.
Yep, because that way to M D will.
Kyle made me think of that, because he asked me for them to do that.
I don't, he always does his own job.
Can we do it in July?
We won't in July. Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
We can, I just want to have really much information from M D.
Yeah.
But we can, you just let me know. I mean, I can set out the amount, so.
Yeah, I'd rather do it in July than, I mean.
Because of football.
Well, no, just because August is knocking on the door, you get to give back in here, and if there's something that.
Yeah. Yeah, I can send.
We can actually.
We can do it tonight even and say.
We can actually do both.
Yeah. Do you want to do it? Let's just say the next meeting for Building, Grounds, and Safety will be, and I'll send an email too, but will be, um, at four thirty, before this meeting.
Next month.
Next month.
Okay.
So that would be the July fifteenth, four thirty.
Sounds like a plan.
Building, Grounds, and Safety.
Okay. Any other committee reports or anything? Kind of slow time of the year, I guess. Okay. So looking at the district calendar going forward, we've got the Fourth of July coming up. July fifteenth then is our next school board meeting, and we'll have a Building and Grounds Committee meeting before that at four thirty. Um, August nineteenth is their school board, August board meeting. Um, August twenty-fifth through twenty-seventh will be Staff Development Day. Uh, September first is Labor Day, September second, middle school and high school will start their first day of school. And September fourth, elementary, will have their first day of school. Coming right up again. So, anything else that we need to discuss tonight? Okay, if not, is there a motion to adjourn? Hello? Okay. Second?
Second.
Thanks, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Order adjourned.